underway. So, as everybody knows, this meeting is being recorded by Norton Media. If you are recording, please let us know. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is straight away. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the world, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna Shanghai the meeting for a moment here real quick. If you notice, one of our members is not here tonight. This is Sherri Cohen. Her father recently passed away. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the Cohen family and all their extended family. If you would be so kind, I'd like to just take a moment of silence to recognize that and pray for them. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is a vote to approve the minutes from September 22nd. Has everyone had a chance to review these?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, changes? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written and sent to us.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstained. That was a 3-0 one. Alright, the next item is the warrants. I will read these into the record, although Mrs. Cohen was the signer of these warrants. September 22nd, school expense warrant, $237.88. September 29th warrant, $268,551.3. School payroll warrant, September 22nd, $1,305,848.66. Next item is the representative's update. Ms. Sabas.
Hi guys, so Tony was out sick, so I was just gonna need my voice for a little bit. But, so from the JCS, the school has been broken into five houses and they're made up of a class for each grade. This month, the houses are competing with each other to see who can pass the most sea turtle eggs to members of their house within one week, which I think is like their currency. So, the houses met last week, this week, and next week, played games with one another, and then got their 50 eggs to pass to a housemate. They're working on collecting as many turtle tokens and eggs as they can at lunch by modeling JCS expectations and values. Students and teachers are also gearing up for fun Halloween events. Many classes have autumn harvest and family traditions as their theme for class this month. So for the LGN, their students filled up their Purple Heart jar in the lobby as a part of their PBIS program. Their third graders had a chance to vote on a special day to celebrate, and so as a reward, they had a sports day last Friday, and everyone was excited to wear their favorite team's jerseys. Grade three is excited for their field trip to Plymouth Plantation and the Mayflower II tomorrow, or Mayflower the second, and that they hope the rain holds off. Kindergarten is gearing up for Pumpkin Day in a couple of weeks, and everyone is looking forward to all kinds of Halloween activities planned in school and around town. And lastly, the Booster-Thon Fun Run is going to kick off at the end of the month, and they're hoping to raise funds to complete the next phase of their playground rehab. From the Yell, obviously, Mr. Gagian is here tonight, but he did say that the Yell PTO trunk-or-treat event is going to happen on Friday, October 28th, and the PTO is also coordinating with the JCS and LGN parent organizations to host the event. For NMS, their fall sports season is well underway, with soccer teams and cross-country teams with continued success. They're also gearing up for two important Days of Action to support two important causes, which would be, on October 19th, they're wearing orange to support Unity Day as a defense against bullying. On October 26th, they're going to be encouraging everybody to wear pink in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And lastly, their Halloween Spirit Day will take place on October 28th, with Halloween Activity Night that evening from 6:00 to 8:00, students are all encouraged to dress up and wear costumes. And lastly, for NHS, we've had a few exciting things for college planning the past two weeks with the College Fair, which is pretty cool, and PSATs for juniors this week. And there has been some really cool student-driven initiatives starting at the high school, including the livestream video announcements, that I know that someone started a club for that, which is like the Media Club, which is really cool. The Best Buddies Club had a really huge resurgence this year with more than 30 students joining the program. The World Language Department launched a civic-minded community improvement project-based learning unit with an assembly to encourage ninth-grade students to get involved, and I know they've had some success with that. And lastly, plans have begun with Student Council to promote the annual faculty and student costume contest for Halloween, which we worked on today. And Spirit Week planning has officially begun with spirit days, hallway decorating, and a pep rally before Thanksgiving. And we picked all of our spirit days today at the meeting, so I'll update you guys how they go. But I think that's all from the schools. So there's a lot going on this week.
Alright, the next item is opening of school. Welcome. I should say, we'll be welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. It has been a tremendous opening of school. I cannot say enough about the faculty and staff and how they were able to get everything going. We have had three new teachers in fourth grade who really have fallen into everything that we're doing, and a couple of them were in the district already and then started with us this year. And one was a student teacher from Wheaton last year that we hired on this year as an official teacher, which was awesome. In fifth grade, we had a couple of new teachers. One teacher that was last year a long-term sub, who subbed for the whole year, and we loved her so much that we brought her back, and another new teacher. The kids have been amazing. Fourth grade, again, falls into just knowing the building, knowing what to do, being able to kind of figure out the hallways and where they're going and all that. The fifth grade, again, picking on the mentors of our building and showing like how to be respectful, responsible, and safe, and they've really been amazing. With that, I can't say enough about our PBIS, that system, our incentive system for positive behavior. It's really taken off unbelievably well. We do these things called hashtags, where we hand out hashtags to the kids. And this year, as you might have seen when you were walking in, our amazing book vending machine that our PTO was able to purchase from Booster-Thon Funds has really been a hit with the kids. The kids love it. They kind of rubberneck as they're walking by in the hallway to see what books are still in there, what they might be able to earn, and it's really been phenomenal. We continued again this year with our Good News Calls of the Day, where kids can be nominated for anything in the world, having a tremendous week, having an amazing month, just doing well that morning. Whatever it might be, teachers can kind of nominate any, actually, not just teachers, any faculty or staff can do it. And it's really been tremendous, and we call Bob Blau and I either call home, talk to the families, and just tell them what a great job their son or daughter has done. We end up taking a picture of them, and they get a coin to get a book from the book vending machine. It's been really amazing. And then, something that we continued, and a big push with the district, of course, has been the IMTSS kind of incentive, or program. And we are in year two of our RTI block that we call LLT, the Lancer Learning Time. And the kids love it, because we group the kids according to kind of a hallway. So, four classrooms in this fourth grade hallway, four classrooms in that hallway. And we break up the kids according to how they're scoring on assessments. And they then get to go see a different teacher or a different staff member. Every, and the same thing's happening in fifth grade in the two kind of ends of the hallways, in the second and third floor. And the kids then get to go see a different teacher, and/or a different staff member, one that they might not even know exists in the building. And Bob and I split a group, and last week, last two weeks, we've been with a fourth grade group, and next week, next couple of weeks, we will be with a fifth grade group, and we're gonna try to rotate through. And it really is awesome, because again, the kids get out of their kind of normal day routine of being with their teacher, and they now get to go see somebody else. They also get to be with kids that might be of the same level with them. And that really does make a difference, that if all of a sudden they're in a classroom, and they know that so-and-so is always gonna be first done, or always gonna shoot their hand up, or always gonna be able to answer the question. Now, all of a sudden, they're with a smaller group of kids, maybe between six and 12 kids, and it's them all being around that same level. They can then answer the question, feel maybe a little bit safer to ask a question, and it really has been phenomenal. The feedback that we get from the kids on it is they loved it last year, and we hope that the more we continue to do it, the better it gets, and the better the kids kind of like it. But everyone pitches in. Like I said, there are paraprofessionals that have groups, specialists that have groups. Bob and I end up having a group. It really is, everyone just stops, drops, and this is what we're doing, LLT. And it's really been awesome. So, we've loved that. And I think Malia's been filling you in on the other things that we were able to accomplish here in the beginning of the year, but that's where we're kind of rolling right now, and we couldn't be more excited as to where we've been able to get to already so far here in October.
Great. Any questions? Or a question or comment?
Oh, it's awesome.
I actually sit off later all the time, I think it's real good.
It really is fun. Like I said, the kids, kids are great, because they'll walk by and they'll kind of rubberneck, and next thing you know, they'll go over there and look, and they'll just... And again, all it takes is them to be able to do the things, the expected behaviors that we ask them, and be respectful, responsible, and safe. And you'll see teachers flipping out hashtags here and there. PTO, I think, last night gave me a little slap on the wrist that we've given out a lot so far of books. I said that we...
I was gonna ask where the books come from.
So far, the PTO has been able to fund it, but we do get a principal's account of, from like Life Touch pictures and things like that, so I'm gonna try to fill it. I said, it's not their responsibility to fill it all the time, we'll be able to fill it as well. We have the book fair starting here tomorrow. We're gonna do a little like Parents Can Donate to the Book Machine. And then, hopefully, we sell a lot of books and we get a lot of scholastic dollars that we can then turn into refilling the machine as well.
Is that a program you're looking to keep going indefinitely?
The book vending machine? Hundred percent. I think some of the other principals have eyed it, and I think there's even a teacher at the high school that is looking at it, Ms. Fay, that wants to get it at the high school.
No, we actually just had a meeting about that.
She made me a promise, though. I just gotta make sure she keeps my promise of like, I think it's being named for me or something.
This room looks great. And I haven't been, I haven't had a student in this school in probably four or five years. It was, it was a tough-looking room four years ago.
It was.
It looked really nice, so I'm assuming it's the PTO took it.
It's the PTO. They ended up doing murals throughout the walls going down. They're talking about doing more, and then just little, little things here and there that they've been able to do. We picked up with some purple paint, some added purple kind of color pops here and there. And then, Mrs. Kabat with the hands up there that are all in purple are just phenomenal. So, I couldn't be happier.
Thank you.
If I could just add something. I think this school in Norton was always kind of like just a stop, like a quick stop. And I think as parents, we never really, you would quickly come in fourth grade, and then you are leaving in fifth grade. So it's really nice to see that it feels much more of a community now. With so much happening for students, for staff, for families, it's really nice that, in some ways, it feels kind of seamless, like it's sort of a stop you want to go to, rather than a stop we sort of had to go to. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Many, many hands have made it work.
We've always known the staff here is great, but it's so nice to really have that community culture, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next item is the CPAC update with Mr. Bernstein. Come on up.
Good evening, hello. Before I go and introduce myself, I want to kind of talk a little bit about last year where we first started. And we had this motto that was, I kind of took it from the TV show New Amsterdam, but I liked it. It said, "How can we help? How can I help?" And we laid down the foundation last year where we wanted to effectively help our students and families. But we knew that before we could thoroughly do that, we had to gain the support and give it back to the admin, to the Special Education Department, to principals, and most importantly, to our families with a child who has a disability. And developing a positive and active communication, which we've done, our motto is producing results, and positive ones. And we've seen such a great representation of families at our events, and we're really, really honored, because it does show that they really want to give back to the kids and the community. And we do really appreciate it. So, I'm Matt Bernstein. I'm president of the CPAC here in Norton. I'm both a parent and a special educator, which gives me an each perspective. It allows me to see issues from multiple vantage points. It's my second year, and I'm incredibly proud of our team. Half the battle is getting a team, and we have a team. And with a team, we can go anywhere, and I think that's what we're gonna do. I know what we're gonna do. We, in such short time, we have been able to rise out of the ashes, so to speak. We acquired a 501(c)(3), which has allowed us to fundraise and provide more opportunities for our students. So, would our mission and would we continue to hope that it is thought of before, is thought that we are here to be a voice, to be a decisive voice, which we're not. We're here to be a voice of reason. We want to make sure that we're welcoming to everyone, and we're fully inclusive, and we coordinate, we participate in events that allows everyone to participate. Every single person should participate, and that is it. Whether you have a disability or not, because of the individuals with disabilities will only thrive with the peers that are there to help them and support them. That's why we are there for everyone. These engaging events have also promoted a wider community involvement from local businesses and town leaders, and is our hope that we serve to unite us all and create an environment where this isn't any one person looking in from the outside. In addition, we strive to be a liaison between the schools and families, ensuring that every child receives a free and equitable education. Our diverse CPAC board consists of parents of a wide range of experience and all knowledge-based with the IEP and the 504 process. I just want to briefly touch on some events that we've done to give you an idea, and a lot of these events are pretty much continuing, and we are adding on. Every Monday, on the first Monday of every month, we meet at the high school auditorium from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, starting in December, we start to roll out some other things, which I'll touch base upon later. On the second Tuesday of every month, we meet at Fiesta Restaurant, and we just have a taco, we have a taco over tacos. And it's literally for those families and those parents that don't feel comfortable coming to an official meeting, but feel that in a more social, relaxed atmosphere, they can come and have a drink, they can have some appetizers or dinner, and they can just kind of sit and talk and be able to express how it is to deal with a child, and be able to relate to them, and feel that they can relate to us and what they go through each and every day. We, last year started, and we've continued to do the Penguins Hatch Holiday. That is on December 10th this year. It's from 10:00 to 2:00 at the LG. And this provides our students the opportunity, especially in the elementary level, to find a safe place where they can go and shop. And they can shop and make mistakes, they can have some laughs, they can be able to have that ability to feel a little bit more of independence when they're finding items in which they can give to their family members and friends. One of the great things I like about this is that we have the cheerleaders involved in being their buddies and walking them around as they're shopping to help them with money, their items, and everything. And that is tremendous, just to see that. I mean, and we thank the cheerleaders for that, that help. We also do the Spring Fling Social, which is gonna be held on April 7th this year, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the middle school. And that was an amazing event. It was so great to see everyone back. It felt like normalcy again, and it was the smiles, the excitement on the kids' faces. It was, it was a very special event. It's offered for the pre-K to 5. And again, it was just a nice event that we were gonna continue to do. We also started the Gnome Surfing. And if you're not familiar with Gnome Surfing, they're a totally nonprofit organization, and they run therapeutic surfing lessons down in Little Compton, Rhode Island. And because of the amazing Spring Fling Social, which, again, couldn't do it without the community, the community sent 20 students from pre-K to 12, free of charge, for an event from 5:00 to 8:00, which was just outstanding. It was awesome, because the kids had, it showed their confidence, that they, if they didn't have, they gained. And it was, what I enjoyed was watching their siblings on the beach, watching their brother or sister participate in an event, because it's usually, and it's not usually, it's changing, but it was always the other way around. And it was nice to see it from a different perspective, and their siblings loved it. And they got to participate in the like little arts and crafts things, they had the yoga on the beach. And then after that, we all went back, and they had pizza and a bonfire, and there was smores. It was just a fantastic event. So next, so this coming August, we're gonna open up for two groups, and welcome 40, 40 students to it. So that's just, that's great. Another thing that we're piloting is called ASD Fit. It's gonna be a six-week activity-based program where it's a social skills and play all in one, to be able to learn about sportsmanship, understanding how one feels when they're faced with a situation that comes to winning and losing, those types of, all while building wellness into the, into the environment. And we're offering this to 20 middle school and elementary school students at the Yell. And we are gonna give it to 50 students on IEP or 504 plan, and then 50 as peer models, as buddies. And they're gonna be able to attend for six weeks. It starts next week on Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:00. It's at Epione. And it's run by, the ASD Fit is the actual organization, it's right by White's Bakery. And he has started this business where he works with the population that is predominantly ASD, autism, but he also has many other individuals with various disabilities. So, he has offered to come aboard and pilot this program. If it's successful, we're gonna offer it across all grade levels, and it will be grouped appropriately and based upon their developmental level and ability. So that's something that we're piloting, we'll see how it goes, and we're interested in feedback from the families on that. The Heart of Gold, which was started last year, I'm sorry, this is a lot, but we do, we think big, so there's a lot. The Heart of Gold was something established to recognize the staff in the district. Not for purposes of giving CPAC the opportunity to just award teachers. It was for the families to award the teachers. We are just the middle people. We are that, we're there to fill that bridge, that bridge, or whatever, so you speak. And the way that you become a Heart of Gold recipient is the family members nominate you. They write a, they write a letter about why they feel that a staff member in the district has gone above and beyond for their child or any child on a disability. And last year, we received 97 nominations, family nominations, 97, which was amazing. What we did was, because we start in December, and we nominate one per school, it equals to about 30 people receiving it, or six from each building. And there are so many others that don't get the opportunity to come and be recognized. So what we did was, we put it on an official letterhead, the one-page letter that the parent and their family wrote, and we gave that to the teacher that was nominated, even though they didn't receive the Heart of Gold, because they're still a part of the Heart of Gold community. And so, just so you get a little bit more insight of how it is, it's someone who carries out and develops the instructional and social practice to promote achievement and participation of students receiving special education services. So, again, it can be anyone. We had from a van driver to a principal being nominated. And what I said to the families when they came, I said that it's not about the adults holding the microphone, it's about the students with a disability who are holding the microphone in their hand and saying why the teacher that's right in front of them or the staff member is so important to them. Many tears. It was, it's a great event, and so something we're gonna continue to do, and that will start in December. Nominations will begin in November next month. The last thing that we're gonna be implementing this year is the Heart of Gold Scholarship. This is gonna be awarded to two graduating seniors who have been involved in special education from pre-K to 12. This can be a student who has been on or is currently on an IEP or 504. This also can be a student who has acted as a peer model to another student with a disability, for example, in a program or programs events or multiple events, or any extracurricular activities. The award can also be given to a graduating student heading to college to pursue a career in special education. So, there'll be two awards, $250 each, to the graduating seniors. And on behalf of the CPAC, thank you very much for the platform tonight. We're excited to work with the committee, and more importantly, we're excited that we are here to support the families and the students. So, thank you.
So I have one question and one comment. How big is your board? Like, how many volunteers do you have?
So, our board consists, with myself, it consists of three others. And one of the things that we have kind of allowed to be kind of said to the people is that you don't have to come all the time.
Yeah.
It's not important. We're not gonna put you to work. We don't want you to do anything for us. If you can come, come. If you cannot, it's okay. If you need us, we're here. That's basically what we're here for, because you never know when an instance is gonna come up where you need somebody. And you may not always need them, but we feel that from the people that have started to come, they are telling others about what we're doing and what we're hoping to do, and it seems to be getting a good response.
So my comment is this. So, I've been on this committee going on eight years now. I have three kids that have been in the district, two still in the high school. This is probably the strongest I've seen CPAC in the last year or so. So I'm assuming that's your work and the work of your boards.
Yeah.
That is tremendous, just what you're voting off and telling us about is tremendous opportunities. And kudos to you and your team, because like I said, this is probably the strongest I've seen in all my years here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, as the Director of Puber Personnel, I see multiple times, probably a month, other districts reaching out and saying, "Hey, do you guys have any ideas? How can we recruit CPAC?" When I first came on, as you said, we really, we had one person who was trying to do it on her own. We were very lucky to have these people here. You can see all the work they do. We communicate a lot. Matt keeps me on my toes a lot. He's always sending ideas, and it's great. I mean, we have a really good, actually, we have a good time when we get together on Mondays, but it's really connected, I think, the staff with some of the families, and seeing the events out there in the community, our kids are joining and they're taking part. And I think the best buddies, and we had 30 students just initially, and there's more coming. They've told me they're coming at the high school. I think this is part of the reason, because we're having this connection between families, community, because there's a lot of community providers out there that are helping us out in the school department. So I can't thank the folks that are here, that do this work. It's amazing what just three people are able to do, with a little bit of help, but really, it's you three that do it, do it. Thank you.
So, if I can just add one thing. So unfortunately, the liaison to CPAC, Kathleen Stern, our former member of our school committee, was the member, and now it is my turn to be the member. And I have to say, I went to my first meeting... And I have to say, I went to my first meeting a week ago, two weeks ago, I can't really remember. And it was impressive. I want to just sort of thank everybody who's involved. The meeting I happened to introduce myself with was a meeting that our high school, excuse me, our school principals were all in attendance as well. I think there's really, it's sort of for me, always been important about building community. Community among schools, but also among programs. And I think that it was really evident that there was a group of people sitting at the table with a similar goal of really supporting our students, supporting our families. And it was important that we share that news and sort of get that out there and give a little bit of airtime to CPAC to let everybody know the amazing things that you were doing. Vinnie and I were sitting next to each other and I was like, "Vinnie, this is great. Vinnie, look at this." So, you know, we were able to really, I was able to really appreciate the amount of work that goes into all of the programming.
Yeah, we appreciate you for coming, so thank you.
So, you know, we're here and, and I think it's just something that we want to continue to develop. And we did say best buddies coming back sort of with 30 members very quickly out of the gate is impressive. We know that the teacher who's leading that is an impressive young teacher. So that might have something to do with it being so, I guess, popular right now. But we hope we can keep that going and really keep the momentum.
We're very fortunate, our community. We're very lucky.
Thank you, Matt, for everything, for all you do.
So Matt, before you go, Matt and I have known each other for a few days.
Might have been my soccer coach.
Might have been a soccer coach. We have a long history. So when he stepped out, Mrs. Cersey said to me, "Matt Bernstein's coming," and I said, "Holy cow, here we go." This is, this is who he is. He's just an enthusiastic guy, wants to do good things for people. He was like this when I was coaching him back in the day. I've been here for 10 years. It's never been stronger, never been this organized. And that is not a knock on people who try. They just couldn't get others, other folks. And, you know, the whole idea, you know, the Taco Tuesday thing, right? Just getting people to go to a place to feel comfortable. Because sometimes coming to our buildings is not necessarily where they feel comfortable or with people that have titles or any of that stuff. So getting together and having a, as you said, like a middle person that can help them along the ways of great things.
And I think just allowing everyone to have their ideas considered and maybe tried. Because that, that taco for tacos was one of our board members' just idea. And if we didn't even listen to it, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't have been so, you know, that's why it's so important. I think that's why this community is so well established. It's because everyone's willing to listen, everyone's outside.
I don't want it to get too big, so these, these ladies out there are really big ones. I want to make sure they get their due.
Audrey does all the events, which is outstanding.
But I don't do it by myself, so.
Would you like to just stand up and introduce yourself? So we can put names in.
I'm Audrey Moschella, you know, some of you. But yeah, a lot of the events kind of came from my past experience of working for the town. So I was on Parks and Rec for a little bit, so I've kind of had that connection to it, so.
I'm Nicole Pacopoulos-Hirsch. I'm actually a provider in town for mental health. So I and I have children on IEP, so it was really important for me to get involved. I also have a child. My child has Down syndrome, I think I should say that. So yeah, so we are very much involved in the special needs community, so we will be for ever.
Great to have you. Thank you so much for doing it. It's never been better. It's never, I've been here for 10 years. It's never been more organized. Recognizing the teachers, I think is great. Love that middleman approach to parents in, in support. And we have over 500 children in our district on a 504, on an IEP. That's pretty significant in terms of, and it ranges from everything. So it's, it's a pretty significant to have a group of people that are willing to work to support that. And it's also nice, you know, through Vinnie and, and, and the team there, and Casey's involved as well, to, to get the phone call about how we're doing things. Because I think for 10 years, we'd be going the other way, like, "What are you doing?" So it's always great to see that, and that's because of their work. So thank you so much.
Any other questions?
What kind of coach, buddy? Great coach.
Didn't we always eat afterwards? We had subs.
If we won, we ate. If we lost, we ran.
That's not too far from the truth, actually.
All right, thanks, Matt. All right, the next agenda item is the vote to approve the DECA trips for 2022, '23 with Mrs. Albrecht.
I'll let Miss Albrecht come up and the students introduce themselves. But as you know, the school committee has to vote on these trips. We've decided a couple of years ago, thanks to Dinesh, that's, let's make it one vote.
Yep.
Handle it for the year. If something special comes up, we can always handle it. So I'll turn it over to Miss Albrecht and the students. Come on up.
Thank you. We're very excited to be here again this year. I was sitting there, I think it's been over 15 years that we started the program. And, you know, we had, we started with four students, and now we have almost 70 for this year. So we're off to a great start. So I'm going to introduce, this is our DECA president, Ted Donahue. He's going to come up and speak a little bit, and he also wants to introduce part of the action team.
Hi. So like she said, my name's Ted Donahue. So I have two action team members with me today. If you guys would like to introduce yourself as well.
Hello, my name is Brian. I'm the vice president fundraising.
Hello, my name is Brandon, and I am on the action team.
So both of them really help out with the day-to-day operations, like going to meetings, making sure things are running smoothly, increasing membership. So they really deserve a lot of credit for all that they do for the club. And I really appreciate them, and I think a lot of other people should as well. So this year, I was fortunate enough to be re-elected president of DECA at our Norton High School chapter. So for those of you that don't know, DECA stands for Distributive Educational Clubs of America. And it's able to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs to be college and career-ready. I joined DECA my freshman year to gain critical experience about the business world. It has taught me valuable skills that have prepared me for interviews, enhanced my communication skills, and taught me what it means to be a leader. They have also improved my ability to make quick, yet informed decisions in high-stress situations. Our Norton DECA chapter has a lot of great opportunities for its members this year. First, we will be taking 14 members to the Fall State Leadership Conference at Bentley University in Waltham at the end of October. We are excited that we will be participating in the upcoming power trip. I will be attending along with four other DECA members this November 11th to 13th in Washington DC, where we will obtain leadership training, practice role plays, meet with college career representatives, and visit some of the most infamous monuments on a private DECA tour, which I'm personally really looking forward to. At the start of 2023, we will have our district competition in Hyannis. Our state competition will be in Boston in February. And finally, our international level of competition will be held in Orlando, Florida this April. This year in particular, we had a large amount of freshmen interested in DECA. And we're very excited to share more with you throughout the year about how things are going, progress, things like that. And for me specifically, I know that DECA has really changed who I am as a person throughout all of high school. I feel that if I didn't join DECA my freshman year, I really wouldn't be the person I am standing in front of you today. It's really helped me break out of my shell, and it's helped me make new friends that I can really value. And I really appreciate the DECA community, and I appreciate that you guys are aware of it and understand how much it means to some of us. So thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thanks, Ted. So on that, if the committee would approve the dates as written for the out-of-town, out-of-state, in particular, it's out-of-state situations. But we do it inclusive as written, so this would be all the trips for DECA, including Hyannis, the state conference in Boston, and the international conference in Orlando, Florida.
Second.
All of those paper.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you for your support.
Good job.
Next item is an enrollment update with Dr. Kada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Just wanted, I gave you the handsouts comparison of October 4, '22 to October 8, '21. And I just want to go through it quickly. The JCS, just looking at in-district column, just the in-district column, has enrolled 39 new students this year. We have 39 more students than the prior year. The LG, 15 more. And then we start to see that negative bubble that's going through. So overall, in pre-K to 3, we have an increase in enrollment of 54 students. So now we have a new bubble. We have the negative bubble going out. We have the positive bubble coming in. Overall, enrollment of, district enrollment would be down 19, which is one of our smaller numbers, actually 18. School choice is up 22 to 208. Reed's has 44 students with us this year, up from 41, for a total of 2465, or over, over-under of plus seven. In the last page, you'll see our NPS Special Education enrollment as, as of October 1st. And that's broken down also by grade level and totals. You'll see on that that we have a couple of bubbles in terms of higher numbers of students than we have in other grades. That's very typical, especially at the elementary level. And then we have it broken down into our art district, and then lastly, the total October number, 575.
So I'm assuming that 570 and 575 would indicate an out-of-district placement for the A-level district?
The 575 would be included as part of this. So it's all numbered, all, all numbers in and includes the itinerant services of nine students that we support.
Oh, I'm saying that the, the down three from September, October means that they.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, could have exited an IEP as well. That's the other thing that can happen.
All right. Next agenda item is a transportation update with Mrs. Hadfield.
Hello. So for transportation, we have about 1,470 students are registered this year, which is more than we ended last year with. So definitely weren't the rotating the bus. We, about 552 of those are paid to ride, which we've brought in about $135,000 to date. Seven of those parents on payment plans, and everybody else has paid up to date except for one or two, which we don't believe are taking the bus anymore. We had a, we've ironed out the routes from the start of the school year because it's always little bumps. And everything seems to be operating well now.
So in general, the thought process in that is, as you know, a number of years ago, we were having issues with this. So here we are, a number of years later, and it seems like it's ironed itself out through all the hard work that happens in the background through the business office, through now Christine and Alex Sanborn, who is the person that's doing the emails and making the phone calls and all of that stuff. So we don't have this floating issue of issues in transportation like we have in the past. So kudos to the school committee because it was you folks that really pushed us, played some hardball on, on everything to do with pay and ride.
Any questions?
You said 552, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Next, we'll stay with Mrs. Hadfield for a budget update.
I sent you the September and October year-to-date financials last week. We have encumbered all the large and predictable expenses so far. Obviously, it's still very early on, so we will have more expenses as the year progresses. But right now, the budget balance is looking about $35,000 left. The, I think I've mentioned in my email too that the October report looks a little bit different because we've made a little budget adjustments. So, but that didn't change the bottom line.
So a couple of changes that, you know, Christine and I have had a lot of discussions about these monthly reports being, as you know, sometimes we transfer at the end of the year. Or we want to actually try not to carry negative line items from month after month. Try to, we can sell them as much as possible. $35,000 left for the rest of the year is probably the least amount of money that we've had. Don't forget that town meeting has an important vote on Monday to move money to transportation, which will make us a little bit more solvent. But, you know, we're still dealing with the, the rule of five days out if positive for COVID. That's five days times sub, times coverage while paying employee. I mean, it is what it is. So we have, we have some concerns with that long-term. And then, of course, any special education issues that come up. We did bring those up to the town, as you know. We'll discuss those in the spring if, in fact, we need the funding like we've done in the past. If you remember last year, we had a request going in, started at about $400,000, came down to $225,000. And then by the end of the, the entire year, we were solvent, didn't have to ask for money. Prior year, we ended up with almost $300,000 worth of requests. And brought it down from $500,000, but we just didn't have the funding. So just big picture type of items on the budget where it is right now. It's, it's a tough budget this year.
Okay. Questions? Is there any way we could, just from a historical perspective of like pre-COVID and what our numbers were looking like, is that possible to do? Like a September of 2019? Just fire that up to us for something. Cool.
All right, the next item is substitute compensation.
Well, speaking of that.
Good segue.
So this is a plan of trying to get up in front. I'm hoping that it can work in order to support our situation. Our daily sub rate right now is $90. We raised it pre-COVID. I'm recommending we go to 100. Half-day subs was not an option. I'm recommending that we do do it. That can be at AM, a midday, or PM, how it works. At $50 an hourly sub, it's minimum wage 1425, because that's how you get to the 100 on the seven-hour day, blah, blah, blah. Long-term subs are 90 and 110. We're recommending going 100, 120. These are longer than the six weeks, if I remember correctly. Okay, right, six weeks, nice. And then the permanent building subs, we have five now, down from 10, actually from 10 down to zero now at 5. Those have been a big help from 100 and 125 after 90 days to 110 and 135 after 90 days. And then we're, we're adding a retired educator, which has not been an option. I don't think this is going to work, to be quite honest, because retired teachers go out at pretty significant per diem. But we're looking at 175 for a seven-hour day. That's basically taking over in the classroom. Maybe if you're planning a trip to Florida in January, you want to work a couple of weeks, make a couple bucks. The idea behind all of this is just to try to see if we can find some more bodies. We have, as of the writing of this on October 6th, one of our building principals spent over 51 sections of classroom time covering the classes themselves.
51 teachers.
51 teachers, so. So times that by, by sections. What, what it means is at the end of the day, my principals can't do their job. They can't return calls to parents. They, you know, they can't go evaluate a teacher. It's, it's a disaster. So hopefully this will help in some way. But I do need this school committee to be able to do it.
I guess my, my main question is, where is the, where are we funding this? We just said we have $35,000 left. How is that compensation?
That's going to be the issue of what happens with the other line items throughout the rest of the year. So any expenses, we, we are not expending any expenses for things that we need unless it's an emergency situation. Versus office, manipulatives that are needed for a classroom situation. But all the other stuff we're saying no to. We've cut back on conferences. All of that is working in that, in that direction. So hopefully, this doesn't become a huge line item, but it is what it is. You know, I've made the town aware of it as well. We are a 400-person district of employees with over 220 teachers, over 65 paraprofessionals that are in the classroom every day and required. Without those folks, I can't open a school. And not opening a school because of lack of subs is not a good idea.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Looking in here, this is, I guess this is laundry. So what do we pay for subs now?
We pay 90.
No, no, what, what's our all-in cost?
We can go in, on a good year, we could be at 2, 225. On a bad year, we could be at half a million.
All right, so this is approximately a 10% increase.
Right.
We're talking about 25,000 to 50,000.
Potentially, yes.
But at the same time, so we're looking at doing half-day subs. And I'm assuming that we didn't do them in the past because it really wasn't the right option.
Right. Right now, the option is instead of having a teacher pulled or a paraprofessional pulled to cover, because that violates an IEP as an example, or a principal having to cover, an assistant principal, at least if they can get the half-day to themselves to do their job that they're paid for, not have the sub. At least we have somebody there. It's also the potential that there might be a person out there who says, "I can work from 9:30 until 1:30, but I can't work from 9:00 until 3:30."
Right. So were we, were we historically hiring subs, not, not all the time, but were there situations where we hired a sub for the day even though we only needed them for half a day?
No, we would use them. Yeah, we would just use them. So the, the impact might be cafeteria duty, hall duty, bus duties, taking over for a hearing for a teacher if a teacher has to go to a IEP meeting, any of that stuff.
Right, so.
Much like our building subs were last year.
Right. So I guess, I guess like, where I'm driving with this is sometimes like you hear me all the time, I say money's fungible. I guess work is fungible too, right? So is it possible that by allowing us to do a half-day sub, we actually, not in totality, but... we actually, not in totality, but there is going to be some savings as well? Because in the past, we paid them 90 for the day and we found something for them to do.
Right.
So, so it's potentially not going to be the full 10% increase. It's going to be.
I think it's, I think, I think the savings there is minimal. I think the idea is you can only come to this school from 8 to 2:45. And now we're saying, well, no, if you want to work 9 to 1, we're okay with that. You know, and now at least I got to cover two other hours, but I don't have to cover seven hours.
Right. Okay.
So that's, that's the idea. I don't know if anybody else is doing this, not to pat ourselves on the back, but the idea came up as an aha moment. I said, what the heck? Let's try it. What do we got to lose? It's a lot of paperwork on the business side, office side.
So how does it work? Like if, sorry, if you, like if you were to bring somebody in as a sub for a day and then maybe you just don't have, like, would we still have to pay them if we saved? Because I'm guessing, my assumption is if at 12 o'clock, we have nothing else for them to do, could we send them home and pay them the half-day rate?
Well, you could. But here's the way it happens. Frontline, teacher goes into frontline, paraprofessional goes into frontline. They put in our daily subs, these are daily subs, basically say, they, they, they look at and they say, yep, I can work for Joe Bieta at the high school for the day, click. I'm already, I've already called in absent. It's on the computer. That sub says, I can work the day. They're working the day. They just come in, they report for the day. Because that teacher is not leaving, not coming back. They're done for the day. So that's very straightforward, black and white. We don't have to debate it. The only issue that ever comes up is going to be situations where somebody gets sick in the middle of the day. Somebody has an emergency call from their child's daycare, a parent, you know, husband, spouse, whatever the situation may be. I'm sorry? And then we also have to set half-sick days with teachers, which when we have the full-time subs actually works really well because our, I have to tell you, especially in all of our schools, but especially one of our schools that's open later and people would have to take the full day to go see their doctor. They do take their half-days instead of taking the full day. So they do come in either late by going to a doctor's appointment at 9 and come in at 10:30 or 11 o'clock or 11, 11:30 and take a half-day as a reverse instead of just, they're gone for the day.
And that's kind of where I was going with what I was asking. So, because that's kind of a new option now. So.
Right.
There may be situations where in the past we did the full-time and we're now going to do the half. We probably won't actually know until we pile in the spread a little bit and see how many times that actually happens.
The idea is that if we, we may have a parent out there that says, I can work any day at the JCS from 9 until 12, but I can't work until 12:30. Well, all of a sudden, that just fixes a half-day problem for us.
Yeah.
In terms of, because maybe the teacher's gone in the morning or for their work and then they're coming back in the hour. As an example.
I got two questions. Where are we at kind of from the surrounding town area?
So this makes us more competitive, right, in terms of the rates? We were already starting to move towards the front when we became 90. We actually, we were one of the first ones that became 90. Everybody was stuck at 75 and 85 for probably a decade. And then that whole thing with, with minimum wage going, going, going up, that started to dwell into that. So now we've become a little bit more competitive. And then the other idea is just the hourly thing. You know, I hate it that it's 1425 as minimum wage, but then that basically becomes the opposite of the 100 for the, for the seven-hour day with any pennies. So that's the reason for that.
And then number two, I don't even know if this would help, but thinking a little outside the box. Do we have anything with the teachers that if they don't take sick days, they get some type of incentive bonus at the end of the year?
We do not have it in the, in terms of a financial incentive in their, in their contract at all. Hasn't really been discussed. Part of it has to do, I guess, you know, it's something maybe we should discuss. Some of it has to do with, it's such an uncontrollable thing, you know, especially, we have two extremes in our lives now, right? I'm on the other side of it, but some of my teachers have young kids. I have elderly parents, right? So we have this jumbo that's going on. We have a lot of staff members with young kids, but we have a ton of staff members who are dealing with aging parents. And family sick becomes that situation. So maybe something we could discuss at some point and maybe put it down for even the next contract or if the two sides wanted to come up with an incentive clause of some sort. Try to see if we could do that.
Any other questions or comments? Entertained motion to approve the substitute compensation as presented. Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Next agenda item is review and vote on surveillance camera.
Thank you.
Usage.
Since April 11th, 2007, you've had an agreement with the Norton Police Department as it relates to our cameras and how they're using it for police deployment. What you have before you is a new MOU that simply also adds for clarification that our 911 system is not connected regionally. And so this agreement just allows that they can only use it for that purpose as you, the language is the same all over the place except that the prohibitive practices is still in there. It just adds them instead of just our local police department. So we're asking for your support. As you know, the cameras have been very beneficial for Norton Public Schools throughout the years. They are only in public areas. We have signage in all our schools that shows that we are under surveillance. And our offices only use it in the situation of a criminal act that they are involved with. Otherwise, it's only used by administrators. I do need a vote.
Any questions, comments? Entertained motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Dan, if you could sign to it, that'd be great. Today is the 13th, and it's not Friday.
All right. Next item is the second reading and vote on the policy of public participation at school committee meetings.
So you have two situations before you today because of changes in other policies. You have item 12 and item 16, which are second readings. One is a handbook, not a policy, it's a handbook. This one is a policy. And then you have first readings because of the change of the potential attendance to the handbook. And then the first reading of the cell phones as a policy event. So your second reading is the first copy. Your second copy is the first reading that's highlighted in blue. And your third is the current policy, BEDH. Okay? So your choices are to, to move into your clean copy of the second reading or maintain your current policy, or do something else. Those are your choices on the public participation at school committee meetings.
So I think what was added from the last reading was the public comments are generally allowed for agenda items or if the person is added to the agenda and public comments for matters that pertain to the school committee's scope, which would be.
Just misspell it.
Yeah, I highlighted that myself as well. So the scope of the school committee's authorities for budget for the Norton Public Schools, performance of the superintendent, educational goals and policies of the Norton Public Schools. So this, you know, public comment policy or participation policy is essentially, you know, you can be on, be put on the agenda within, you know, the reasonable timeframe, I believe it's 72 hours. We'll have a public comment policy if necessary and people show up for that. And then just those public comments will be within the scope of what we do as a school committee. Is there any comments on this at all? I'm looking at you, so.
I, um.
Well, I'll be very, very agree because I think I've already, I've already walked through this. I'm going to vote against it. I'm going to vote to keep the current policy in place. But for the, for the clean reading, the second, part number five, public comments shall concern only items that are both on the agenda for that meeting. That's, it's redundant. Agenda items are always open for public comment. It wouldn't make sense to come forward at the beginning of the meeting and speak on something that is on the agenda later in the meeting. I don't know why we'd have that on there. Sorry, just, and I have a note here. I'm just trying to remember why I wrote this. Oh, I, I thought number eight was redundant as well because I believe that there was, it's essentially saying you can hand in written comments. And there was somewhere in here that it already says that written comments, it's right in front of it. Number one of the, not, not the longer list, but the 1, 2, 3 at the top, written correspondence may be directed to the committee through the superintendent for consideration in the meeting. It's, it's, it's already kind of in there. It's a slight difference, I guess, but I think that's kind of redundant as well. So. That's not a bad one. I'm going to vote against it because I don't, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to do.
Carol?
If you could just sort of talk about kind of point number two. At the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives who have signed up to speak.
Right. So there's different practices that are done. I'll share a couple of them. Number one, 15 minutes prior to the beginning of your meeting at 5:45, there'd be a form right there. Somebody can walk in, they place their name on it, they place their address, they have a seat. You start the meeting and you grab the sheet and the chair says, you know, Mr. Schlecker, you're up for your three minutes. And then the next person, then the next person, you could do that for 15 minutes. But you do it as a signup. You don't just sit here for 15 minutes and wait for somebody to walk in, right? You don't, you don't start your meeting at 6 and go, okay, we're public comment, we're going to wait 15 minutes. That's not the way it works. It would be, somebody comes in, they sign up. That's one way. The other way to do it is you don't have to sign up. You start your meeting, do your pledge, you sit down and you say, is there anyone here for public comment? And you give them their three minutes and then you move to the agenda. And you can keep, you can keep your time allocation. Let's say there was 20 people here and they each got three minutes. You know, that's, you're over your 15 minutes. So you could say at this time, I'm closing public comment until the next meeting. You can do that. So those are, those are the two that I've seen. As you know, I sat on a school committee at one point and we had, we had the superintendent and the assistant. Your secretary for the meeting shows up 15 minutes early and places the sheet there and you sign up, turns it over to the chair, calls out the name, come up and speak. Or you do the other one, which is, it's public comment. Anybody here for public comment? So you could have a full room like we'd had earlier and somebody could be here with a public comment that's related to the items allowed for public comment. During the agenda, they can still speak to any, anything that they want, if allowed to by the chair. So those are the, that's the general thought of it. And again, if, if the comments are not under the purview of the school committee, then the chair has the right to say, this has got nothing to do with what we're responsible for. And the only person that they can lambast is the superintendent or you guys.
Okay. Next agenda item?
Nope, not good.
If you maintain your current policy, what you're basically saying is if you would like to be placed on the agenda, you need to notify us 72 hours ahead of time and the chair makes the decision to have you on the agenda. Otherwise, you can basically speak on the agenda if, if there's an agenda item you want to speak to, which has been our practice in the past.
All right. So how would we?
So your second reading would be either up or down. Either vote it up or vote it down. If you vote it down, then you're referring back to your original policy, which is the policy on.
You need to vote to keep the current policy?
No, you don't need to vote to keep the current policy because it's still in place.
All right. So entertaining motion to enter in the second reading, proposed update policy, BEDH.
Any of you can say that you're, you're putting it on the table for the purposes of vote.
Seems like it's dying for lack of emotion, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like town meeting.
It's, it's also, it's also dying for lack of emotion.
Policy will remain though.
Died because of lack of emotion. Can't think of any other way to say it. All right. The next one, sorry, just to check, I.
No, I was just thinking maybe we go to the second reading and then come back to the first reading to go a little out.
Well, I, no, because that one's a lot of policy done, so it could be a bit more debated.
All right. So next is the first reading of the new policy regarding cell phones, electronic devices.
Right. So thanks to the chair, at the last meeting, we asked for the committee to contact the chair if there are issues. The chair reached, and Dan, if you'll correct me, through legal counsel. I put legal counsel and the chair together via email and then had them talk on the phone and come to.
Always a rousing discussion with the attorneys.
Yes, it's always, it always is. You get charged every 15 minutes. So what is before you is different from the recommended cellular phone. I'm going to go on record to say that I stand by the original recommendation. I think you all know that. I've said it at the other meeting. Your current first reading of this new policy, which you could finalize on Monday if you wanted to or wait until the end of October, is basically a, a out-of-sight, out-of-mind type of situation. So students cannot have it out unless there's a particular activity that's going on versus it's placed in the shelf. I do know that Principal Dolman here, there are members of the staff. I did inform the committee that there are members of staff who may want to speak to this. So I'll defer to the chair on recognizing folks.
Before you do that, can I just ask, when I was reviewing this, so potentially this is the policy that would be prescribed to all of the schools and this is what would go into, because the handbook for the high school has.
Yes. It would change the handbook at the high school. However.
We're, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Where this is a first reading and not a vote, we potentially can't vote on the high school handbook then, correct? Because part of the handbook includes the cellphone policy?
Well, you can, but we can come back as soon, right after you do the second reading. So we can still do the attendant stuff.
Well, it would supersede it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Right. You get the practice versus the policy. You oversee policy, we oversee practice. So any policy that goes into a handbook. But you're right, the fundamental process of this should be that way to make it clean. So.
Mrs. Galliers' comment just made me think, as younger students are having their phones, are we looking to put this in all student handbooks at some policy?
This, this policy is a policy. It's a 3K to 12 policy. It's not.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was.
Correct.
All right. Anything else from the members?
Just a reminder, if we're, I don't care if this stays in or not, I'm just not sure why it's in there. If, if we're not taking possession of the phones, I'm not sure why at the end we said the district should not be responsible for any damage, loss, or stolen. Is it just kind of?
That's standard words.
It's a standard.
Kind of same as like if it's in the locker room or something like that.
We also reserve the right if we take the phone because of an incident. Let's say it's taken because of inappropriate use in a situation, we, we're basically saying we, whatever happens of that phone is not our problem.
Yeah, if it's borrowed plate, that's fine. That's fine. All right. First reading.
Mr. Dolmans, did you have?
Yeah. No, I just, I wanted to make sure that I just kind of framed sort of where this came from and sort of the genesis of it. At the high school, far and away, the biggest reason for it was teaching and learning. And that coming out of the pandemic, certainly students seem to have developed a new and even sort of more intimate relationship with their phone, let's say, where they were using it more often and more frequently. Over the summer, at the very end of school, we administered a staff culture and climate survey. And through that, anecdotally, there was a great deal of commentary on sort of getting a uniform policy at the high school in order to allow for teachers to support each other and managing this within the classroom. So the idea of it being a consistent process in all classrooms came from teachers supporting each other. Where if there were uneven sort of expectations within classrooms, that led to conflict where teachers would be played against each other. Students would say things like so-and-so doesn't make me put my phone in the holder. Others do. Where this policy was in place in certain departments. So there was a pretty good outcry for a consistent policy. When we convened our academic coordinators over the course of the summer, this was suggested by some of our members. Some of their departments actually had this as a, as a department policy or practice within the science department, for instance, within the world language department. And for the most part, all that we talked about was distraction. We saw the ancillary benefits of some of the behavioral things that happened as well. Is that cell phones were used during class in order to arrange to meet up in bathrooms, those types of things. But our, our primary focus was making sure that students were connected in class, interacting with their peers face-to-face, interacting with their teacher face-to-face, not worrying about the notifications as their phone sat in their pocket buzzing throughout the period of class and really connecting with the content and with their classmates and. throughout the period of class, and really connecting with the content and with their classmates and teachers. That was the, the primary sort of goal of this policy, or practice, I should say, at the high school. Just sort of along with this, after we implemented this at the school, we did take a sort of temperature on where teachers were after about a little more than a week of implementing. We asked teachers what the effect was on the class. We had fifty-five respondents of that, fifty-one teachers said that it had a very positive effect on the classroom. It's over almost ninety-three percent. Similarly, we asked them, would they be on board to continue it throughout the course of the year? Same similar numbers, fifty-one out of fifty-four said that they would. So it's something really just teachers supporting each other, and having this be uniform was something that was going to allow for teaching and learning to happen in our classrooms. You know, definitely some of the anecdotal reports from this, and I can certainly turn it over to some of the teachers who sort of spoke to me about wanting to voice just their anecdotal experience with this and how it has improved their classroom. But things that came through on that survey of kids being more engaged, not having to pester kids to put phones away has changed my attitude, which is reflected by the students. Everyone's calmer, nicer, students are now more engaged in class, they talk to each other rather than staring at their phones or things that we have sort of heard from teachers. So I, I just wanted to kind of turn it over to some teachers here. I don't know if they wanted to speak about things that happened in their classroom, sort of anecdotally, just to let you know sort of why and how it has helped us.
Hi Erin, my name is Rachel Kearney, I am a special education teacher at Norton High School. I'm in my ninth year of teaching at the high school, and I also am a proud graduate of Norton High School, class of eighty-nine. You know, I am very grateful and proud to work in this district. I received a great education in the Norton Public School System. I had fantastic teachers, administrators, one of whom was Mrs. O'Neill's dad, Mr. Fernandez. You can play six degrees of separation in Norton, and you know, if you grew up here in the seventies and eighties, you know everybody. And I'm here, so, so, you know, going to Norton High School and teaching every day is, really is a joy and a privilege. And as Mr. Dolman has said, especially coming out of the pandemic, the uses of the phones have just been just incredibly high. And, you know, it's, I think it helps students become better learners when they don't have to deal with the distractions that's constantly going off on their phone. It keeps the school safer because we don't have kids texting each other, hey, meet up in the bathroom, let's hang out for twenty minutes. You know, they're not, in my experience, you know, by now, at this point in the school year last year, I probably had written twenty referrals, which is, you know, it's a behavioral issue. And it was primarily for being out of class for more than ten minutes. That's sort of like the de facto rules, you have ten minutes to go to the bathroom and get back. I would say I've probably written twenty in the, you know, those first six weeks of last year, I've written two this year. Because once students aren't taking their phones with them to the bathroom, they really have nothing to do but just go to the bathroom and come back, they're not texting their friends saying, hey, come to the math bathroom. There's five or six of us there. It helps them stay in class more, which increases their learning. They don't have their phones on them, so they're actually talking in person to the students around them versus if there's a lapse in teaching for a moment or two as you're transitioning, they're not all just suddenly back on their device, they're talking to a person next to them. So I've seen improved learning, engagement, safety in the building, and I think that benefits every student, even if you happen to have a student in our district who does have the self-discipline to stay off their phone for an entire hour. You know, it's distracting to them if I have to five or six times during the class say, can you please put your phone away? Like, it, it helps the learning for every student in the classroom, even if they don't necessarily have a challenge with staying off of their phones. So I would encourage you to think about adopting the policy that was proposed where it goes on the wall. You know, I reviewed the policy that's in the agenda today, and I think one of the reasons why I find it to be somewhat insufficient is if it's just out of sight, that means it's just on their pocket or in their hoodie, which is what we basically had. And so then they, I don't see it in the classroom, but then they're still taking it to the bathroom and they're out for fifteen or twenty minutes, they're being, so they're losing time on learning. And the behavioral issues that we have had in the path, in the bathroom are still present. If it's on the wall, a teacher can easily do a quick head count, you know, eighteen heads in my classroom, eighteen phones on the wall, and then everyone's done with it, you're just focused and learning, and it's not an issue. So, you know, I would respectfully ask that you consider adopting the policy that we would like to put it in the student handbook, which is keeping it on the wall. It's consistent in every classroom, every day. Kids, I think, thrive on consistency. When they know what the expectations are in every single classroom every day, it makes for a better learning environment for, for everybody. And I have a few other teachers, I hope they wanna come up and be brave and talk, but thank you for taking the time to listen. This is Mrs. Costa, who is our math academic coordinator and a calculus teacher for the most part.
Hi, so basically, everything that Rachel said is what, how I feel. The students are much more engaged. I feel like they just seem happier in general too, like they are not, again, like looking at their phones, getting any kind of depressing news in the middle of class. And speaking to that, there was, the day that Queen Elizabeth died, we had no idea. Because I was thinking of it at the end of the class, when there was like five minutes left, and I said, okay, you've all done all that you need to do, now you can go get their phones. They get so excited, like, oh yes, I get to look at it for five minutes. And they all went to get their phones, and they all started going, Queen Elizabeth died? Queen Elizabeth died? And I was like, oh my god, if this was last year, the second it happened, everybody would have known, the whole class would have gone into disarray, and we wouldn't have been able to continue. So as, as sad as that was at the end, it was like, wow, this is really working. They really have put their phones away, they really are engaged in what they're learning. So that was kind of an amazing aha moment for me. Also, I know that the issue of what if there's an emergency, what if somebody has a medical thing going on? I told all of my classes on the first day, this is the policy, this is what we are doing in our classroom. But if you have something going on at home, let me know. If your parents need to get in contact with you, and you need to check your phone a couple of times, let me know. Like, I am, I am okay with that, I am human, you are human. They, I wanna treat them like the adults that they are becoming, and I want them to know that I, I see them, I hear them, I understand that if they have something going on at home, it could be just as important as if my child gets sick at school and I have to check my phone and I have to see that and go pick them up. They might have an issue at home or with parents or something else where they need that too. And I hear them and I know that that is an issue, but again, keep it to the side. Again, the out of sight, out of mind just doesn't work. So if it's in the thing and they say, they kind of look at me and give me the hint like, oh, I need to go check, sure, go up, grab it. And again, I've said this to all of my students, and everybody is kind of on that same page that if you speak to me one-on-one and you need to go check it, great. And then you put it back and you go sit down and you're re-engaged in the lesson, that's great. I also have students that have medical issues, that the phone is attached to a medical device that they need. That is a hundred percent, obviously, they need it on them. Like, I've had kids beeping in class, and everybody else kind of looks around and they know. They, they understand it's not like, oh, they get to have their phone because they have a medical issue. Like, those kids do kind of keep it away, and if they're, if they're beeping, they pull it out and they look at it, they check it, and they put it back. So again, it's just kind of one of those things in life. Everybody gets a little bit treated differently if you have certain issues that you need to have help with. So again, that whole teaching and learning is, has been amazing. I really do, I, I feel like I just see the smiles on their faces as they're engaged with me and not every time I look up going, oh, you're not looking at me, oh, you're not looking at me, because you're looking down at your phone. So it's definitely been a wonderful, wonderful thing that's been going on in our classrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Murphy, I'm the science teacher at the high school. I agree with everything they said, and after a few weeks, we kind of started noticing why it's so less tense in this school. Like, there's not this barrier between students and teachers, the students that really wanna be on their phones, that's gone. It's awesome, I mean, they're just, they really are happy. And there's also this social emotional piece where, I mean, when I was in high school, I mean, I'm dating myself, but I didn't have a phone. And if I had.
Boston did.
Neither. Okay, good. If I had something going on, like maybe my friend and I were in an argument, I could go to my math class and not think about it. And maybe I wouldn't think about it for two more classes. I might even deal with it later on the next day. But these kids have these notifications bombarding them all day. I don't even know what they're notifying about, but they have their friends, and they have to go on the group chats, and they have to Snapchat. It's like, oh my god, how do they even deal with that? They have so much stress with all these notifications all day, I don't even know how they deal with it. But if they're doing that, and they're thinking about that, and it's distracting them all the time, that they have these bad habits. And adults have the bad habits too, I mean, not, not any of the teachers, we're perfect, but. But, but if you notice, people in the world are just always looking at their phones, and I really think that you, you can't break a habit by put, put it away, put it away, put it away, you just take it out of the, out of the whole picture, and now you're helping them in their own social emotional health too. And there, there might be people that say, well, they're more anxious without it, but I haven't really seen that. And if there's maybe one-off, we've had a conversation, and maybe they get to keep it on them in their bag, but no one really knows. And that, that's a one person out of a hundred. So, but that would be more like a medical thing. So I really think it's something you can't really break that habit without just eliminating it. And I just, I really support what, taking them out of the kids' hands in the classroom. And the other thing is, it's really helping the teachers so much, but there is still a need to have it not in their hands in the hallways because we have to help our administration too. They're still having some problems because they're still going on their cell phones, and some kids have them in the hallways. We really have to support our administrators, because they did all this to support us, and our lives is so much better, and our kids' lives are so much better. But we really have to make it so that it's the whole school all the time following the rules. And it will eliminate any of these discipline problems that exist in home. That's what I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I just clarify something, Mrs. Murphy said, we don't mean taking them and they can't use them in the hallways ever. In between every passing time, they have a chance to check. It's more when they're going to or from the bathroom that we don't want them in the hallways. But they do have access to their phones multiple times a day to check the latest TikTok or Snapchat. They have built an opportunity to do that.
They have it every single hour, they have it all morning, they have it in lunch, they have it a lot.
Yeah, just to reiterate to you something that Ms. Costa mentioned, is that a lot of teachers that I've been in classrooms, they've developed it as, as another tool for classroom management. If it's an incentive, if students are working really hard for thirty-five minutes, they can have a five-minute phone break when they're doing it. It's something that allows them to listen to music as well. Those exceptions are made often as a way of classroom management by our teachers. Just some of the things that was brought up, some of the data to kind of support that. We have at about a thirty-day period from March fifteenth to April fifteenth last year, we kind of took a look at some of the data points that we had, such as discipline referrals related to phones. And also, because we use eHaulPass, we have the ability to kind of take a look at how long students are out of the classroom, going to the restroom. So this is something that we can take a look at, students who are under ten minutes versus students who are over ten minutes. In both cases, we had, back in April, we had about sixty-three hundred passes over the course of a thirty-day period. Similar numbers this year from September ninth to October ninth, we had about sixty-five hundred. We did see about a four percent drop in the students who are out over ten minutes. We did see escalation in the sort of system-ended passes. And what that means is ones that hadn't been ended, that's because cell phones were being used for passes, but instead of that, students are using Chromebooks. But we did see a pretty significant drop in students who are out of the room for ten to thirty minutes, from about twenty-seven percent to about twenty percent, so a seven percent drop or so. So again, some things that have helped us to some degrees, some data to support that. Just to give you an idea where we were last March and April, we had over two-hundred-and-fifty-three, or we had exactly two-hundred-and-fifty-three teacher referrals. Of those, fifteen of the teacher comments referenced the use of phones. All of those others were also class cuts so far from September ninth to October ninth. Hundred-and-twenty-seven teacher referrals, only six of those have referenced phones about it. So again, those are corollary, they're not necessarily causation, just some additional data points that we've been tracking based on what we've been hearing from teachers as well. Again, the whole point is teaching and learning consistency, having students have that expectations, and teachers sort of helping each other out with those cell phones in the pockets is the reason why we wanted to institute that practice throughout the course of the summer. Any questions?
I guess you said fifty-one of fifty-four responded, yes. What are some of the reasons why teachers wouldn't want to adopt the policy that you referred to?
So I can tell you exactly what they are. I don't have it written for me to pull up, but a lot of it is that it's top-down, that the idea that it is being dictated to them. And that is something that there are teachers who would rather have their, you know, haven't seen problems with the cell phones, would rather have them, keep them. Some of the other things have to do with the idea of taking responsibility for expensive devices, that that is something that they don't want to, to take on. And some teachers sort of see it as, I mean, I guess, more difficult to enforce and that that might cause more complaints or sort of conflict with students. Those were some of the initial things that, that they said were reasons why I wouldn't.
If I could piggyback on this, as the committee knows where I stand on this, I'm not gonna belabor the perspective. Here's the, here's the part that sometimes is hard to talk about. I think the staff at the high school recognizes my support for the policy. I, I'm a little sick and tired of three or four people not doing the job they're supposed to be doing. And my job is to put these two people on those three or four teachers who don't wanna follow the handbook. Because if they're not following the policy on cellular, I can guarantee you they're not proud of doing it in other ways as well. And so if, if a majority of the staff supports this, which they do, clearly, and we have three, five, not, whatever the number is, it's not gonna just be the seller of the policy. And I say this respectfully to the staff that's here, and whatever way they wanna take it back. It, it is an accountability system for the adults in the building, not just an accountability system for the students in the building. That, that, that's something that I haven't said in the past, but it is what it is. I was a high school principal at one point. I know who allows for kids to sit at the door ten minutes before the end of the day. And are the same people that complain to me that they don't have enough time to teach the curriculum. And then you have to have those difficult conversations with those minimal number of people. And eventually, a decision needs to be made about what happens to that staff member from warning to being written up to suspended to fired, or they choose to leave. Those are the protocols. The high school has, in general, a good culture. It has the same five percent of the whistleblowers in terms of kids who don't, I shouldn't call them whistleblowers, the five percent of the kids who don't wanna follow the rules for whatever reason, they probably don't follow them at home either. When you break down the classes to AP honors, college prep, and so and so forth, I bet you the data is even more interesting, right? The perception of adults, of the kid who takes their education seriously versus the kid who's struggling versus the kid who's got this, who's got that, the numbers are gonna go all over the place. But when we have, for example, this policy, if implemented as the quote compromise policy, will still allow for a teacher in the classroom, as an individual teacher, to say, all, all, all the phones go on my wall. Doesn't stop them from doing that, it's an individual decision. So now we got Johnny goes to class period one, it has to go up, period two and three, they can keep it out of sight, but by the way, take it to the bathroom every time they go. You know, saying no to the bathroom is something this district needs to learn to do. Sixty-seven hundred visits to bathrooms and out of the classroom in a month out of seven hundred kids? Absurd, stop saying no, let them sue us. You know, you're saying, no, my kid can't go to the bathroom, come on. It, it's absurd, the amount of time that we're spending going to the bathroom in this district. And, and then the other part of this that's important is, there are gonna have to be repercussions for not following the rule. There're gonna have to be repercussions. We're not talking a significant number of kids. Vaping is still happening at Norton High School, right, folks? Still happening at Norton High School. That's, that's another issue we have to tackle again. But at least right now, to this moment in time, I don't have this going on. Meet me, as you know, last year, the number of fights that we had in bathroom situations all revolved around communication, receive cell phones, meet me there, then the fight breaks out. So this is just one way of trying to stop some of this. There is always an impact, always an impact, on all the great kids that we have at Norton High School, because now they have to follow this rule, even though they've never been a violator of the rule. I know some of them. So, but that's unfortunately, rules that are made within a school building are usually made, as I said earlier, because of some parent somewhere, somehow decides to challenge the school system, and we lose, and we have to come up with a policy in order to cross the T's and W's. So there is accountability that will, will have to be had, consistency that will have to be had. And, and maybe the compromise is, let's do this for a period of time and collect some data and see if it changes. I would rather go down that road than just simply say, this is the new policy, and we don't have an opportunity to come back and really look at it. Did it stay the same? Maybe the student body gets it. They've heard, they've learned, heard loud and clear that they're not gonna do that, I'll leave it at that.
Anything else from the committee on this? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
No worries, kinda hiding in the corner.
It's the second.
Yeah, parallel. So I don't wanna rehash many of the points that have, that have already come up, but just to highlight a couple of things. You know, one of the, the reservations about the, our original policy was that it's sort of saying that our students don't have the intellectual capacity to make good decisions about technology. Some of our highest achieving students to our, to, you know, our students who struggle, have issues in this area. It's a very different, very difficult regulatory piece for students at the high school level. So I think that's. So I think that's important to keep in mind. Um it has caused our students to be more connected. At the root of almost every disciplinary issue that we handle is technology and or vaping. Almost everything that comes across our desk. Um and there are two epidemics that are that are facing us in education that are out of control. We do not have the tools to handle them. The we're we're not going to solve it, but this this is a piece that would be instrumental in the fight against negative negative behaviors in those two areas. Um I don't think the high school administration or or the staff often come forward and and ask for additional tools um in terms of policy to to help us do what we see needs to happen at on a daily basis at the high school. And I think it's important to to note that we're asking for this. We think it's an important piece. Um and and that's something to be said. I I I don't know if we've ever seen, you know, this many high school staff sitting before school community advocating for for a policy. Um so to me, that that would be a big win. And to be quite honest, it does not affect my day-to-day the same way it does these folks right here. Um so the administration is going to going to figure it out whether or not the policy passes or not. But I I think it would be a real big win with with our educators um at the high school level and and throughout the district to to move forward with um a policy more similar to what we originally proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So the policy is a first reading. You're not voting tonight. Um you can vote on Monday. It will be on the agenda prior to town meeting. Or you can take it up at your other meeting um in October.
Uh next to the other item is the first reading of amended policy J E C, regulation of school attendance.
So the reason why this is coming up as a first policy is because of the original attendance stuff that you read. And so Legal is just trying to clean up some language in your current policy that makes it just easier for everybody and has less of a minutia in language. And I think you can see that in J E C. And I'll take the the next one as well, since it's a first reading, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, um which is policy J H, students' absences and excuses. Um and basically, um the idea here is to try to make sure that the school committee can really control, if you will, and has the right to to control policy while the student attendance in the handbook is a handbook vote, but it is not a policy. So those are two different things, right? You you have the right under the law with with student handbooks to to say, we agree with the standard handbook, but you're not putting, you could put these policies in the handbook, but the day-to-day procedures that are there in the second reading of the handbook, student attendance, which is item sixteen. So um to Ms. Gallagher's Gallagher's point earlier, um if there are major changes that you need to see in the first reading of J E C and J H, please get into the chairman or myself prior to the next meeting so that we can potentially vote on all of this at the next meeting.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So um on the the policy, the first reading policy. I I don't have any particular issue with it except that um it's it's just slightly inconsistent with the the handbook and I think we should actually make them consistent.
Okay.
The handbook allows for excused absence to include Norton High School or district-sponsored or affiliated events, competitions or honors, EG field trips, athletic events, I think we should actually include that in the policy as well.
Okay, so that is from the acknowledged absences?
That is from excused absences.
Excused absences?
Excused absences in the handbook, um towards the end of it, um right above religious holidays.
Gotcha.
That should be included in the policy as well.
Okay. We'll make a note of that.
So just a little background on this one. I did speak to Legal. So I asked for this to be gathered up. We actually had four different policies as it pertained to this. So that was why this this one has to go back to being a first reading because we had to dress it up a little bit. And I know, you know, our last reading.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, much like the rest of you, I was confused with some of this because it was pulling from these different policies. So so that's why this one's dressed up nice for the dance.
The clean version one?
Yes. So that was kind of where that came from because um Legal was like, you you have many different things and then you had this policy, but it never got taken out. So that's why this one had to go back to a first reading.
So under that page, we're looking at the Norton High School just sponsored or affiliated events bullet point.
Right.
Is it that and and adding that bullet point to the tallest thing?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Because I think that makes sense, right?
Yeah, it does, because everything else is there except for that.
Any other comments?
Are we doing J H as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would probably make just a really minor change about student absence notification. We should probably say each principal or their attending lead.
Good point.
And it's on both the the first and second paragraphs.
Yeah, that's weird language in there.
Sorry, it does have, sorry, it does have designated second one.
It's second in the second one, not the first one.
Because the first one doesn't have it.
Right. Yeah, because if it says principal, it doesn't mean assistant principal.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. We'll clean those up for you for uh as early as Monday if that's the wishes of the committee.
The one question um that I have, so for one of the absence, um it's for college and post-graduation planning. So in the in this document, the policy J E C, it sort of offers that as an option, but it doesn't um clarify how many. Does that need to be more specific? College appointments or visitations is what it sort of says here.
Yeah, so one would be that you allow for it as a policy. The other one is a procedure that we've set it at too. As an example. It could be, for example, that we decide down the road procedurally that three is a better number because we're seeing kids apply to more schools. Or whatever the case, or maybe it's a half day. Maybe they're only going to Wheaton and then they can come back and you know, that type of stuff. So that would be more procedural versus policy, which is, yeah, we we allow for it.
So I think as I'm thinking back, did we clean up about the makeup work as as well?
Yeah.
That wasn't one of the concerns.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that was cleaned up. So the concept of makeup work and truancy are two different things. Truancy is really establishing that the student isn't coming to school. That does give teachers some flexibility. I will tell you that our staff overwhelmingly, I I can't say a hundred percent because I didn't take a vote, but the fact is, I'm pretty sure that teachers allow for makeup work. The issue is um is is um within those truancy kids um in general. It's not the student that's out here and there and so on and so forth, even a medical situation. It's the kid that hasn't been in school. Truancy is defined as fifteen consecutive days uh by statute and 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 no rationale and 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 but then again, our staff, I know this for a fact, our administration, I know this for a fact, and I know it as my philosophy is, we don't want to drop out. We want to try to get kids. And I can tell you right now, Norton High School gets kids to the finish line every single year that I've been here. And if they haven't gotten to the finish line, it's because they don't do want to do that X that that thing that gets them there. I mean, at one time, we were dropping out eighteen, nineteen kids at our high school. We've been at or below the state average every single year for nine consecutive years, um in including during COVID. So that speaks to the work of the staff and support staff to get them there. And yeah, it's last minute. I mean, at the end of the day, a high school diploma today means a means uh so much more for certain groups of kids and not enough for other groups of kids. Uh I don't know if anybody's looked at any signs out there, especially in the in the trades. Can't find anybody who would. So we want to get them to to their high school diploma while keeping our standards uh where they should be. So that is a second reading on the handbook student attendance.
Any uh questions or comments on that second reading?
Are you on the handbook part?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, can I ask?
Sure.
Add a piece there. So in the um the proposed document um that was forwarded by Legal, there's the piece about um credit loss on page thirty of the attached script.
That's highlighted?
Yes, correct. That's actually not a a policy we want to endorse at the high school. Um I think credit loss is is largely very detrimental to graduation rates. Um so as we had originally written it for this year, um what we hoped to do in instances where a student had a term um with excessive unexcused absences, um going for a pass fail grade um with sort of the mindset that we didn't have enough data to to grade accurately um on the full numerical scale. Um so that was on the proposal that we originally put forward. Um and then the other piece um that was different from from what we hope to implement at the high school um is not doing the attendance appeals board piece. We found that that was very reactive to student absenteeism. Um but instead, we're trying to do attendance improvement plans as absenteeism is coming up to be more proactive um in our interventions for attendance issues.
So what I would see uh based on that is, Amy, if we could have some language from you uh by by tomorrow or Monday at the latest, um so that we can provide it to the school committee and I'll ask you to vote it with that language unless you are okay with that language.
So I was actually originally against the pass fail, but but um listening to you and kind of thinking it over, it it does make a little more sense, I think, probably is is. But my issue was more not allowing them a grade in it. You know, if if twenty or whatever the number is, unexcused absences, you're probably not getting it. But if if they were in fact getting a pretty good grade and we were going to say, okay, you know, you're not going to get that B plus, whatever, you're going to get pass fail. I was kind of, I was I was against that, uh but versus not getting credit, I think I'd rather have them get the pass fail, quite honestly. Um so.
I think it goes to the document, it's getting them to the finish line.
Right, right, exactly.
This is a not huge amount of situations, right? It's very specified to situations of students that 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 we, for the right reasons, and the student have gotten to that end game. And it's about getting to the finish line.
So can I ask? If if they if they're pass fail, they have either passed or they have failed, right? If they have passed, they have some grade, be it a D, C, I don't know what we use for for passing and failing.
Remarkably, it would be a sixty-five.
But so they they have some passing grade. Why are we not just giving them the grade rather than pass fail?
Because they may not have the chance to make the bulk of work out of the thing. So if you had a C and you missed thirty days, you have time to get all those thirty days of work.
Well, you you have to do the work though, right? We're not just saying, hey, you have a C, but you only did twenty percent of the work.
So so attending high school also has a seat time requirement, right? You have to be in school.
Right.
So the pass fail is the idea that we're working with the student, but we're not we're not we're not trying to create that every course for any student could be a pass.
No, I I understand.
So during COVID, as an example, guys, correct me if I'm wrong on this, please, we we went into this A range, B range kind of lingo. That could actually be the compromise, is that you're not giving the student a direct grade, but you're saying it's a, you know, D range, C range, which is probably what it would be. I'm not sure it'd be an A or a B, but the idea is for those unique circumstances, giving the credit to the student, but also recognizing that the student went through a certain protocol.
So you're you're talking about a situation where they maybe have not done all the work, but we feel that they are at least good enough to get.
They've done sixty-five percent of the work.
Is what you're saying.
If you will.
If I may, what we're really talking about is situations where we need to motivate students and and families to bring students to school. Um and in some cases, the application of an academic penalty is one of the only tools that we have to do that. Um when we apply other consequences, it leads to additional time out of school. Um you know, many, many students who struggle with absenteeism are not engaged in extracurriculars or some of the other privileges we could pull back. Um so there there's really not much left to stand on. So once and when we are talking about those improvement plans, um what they essentially are are contracts with the student and family that outline a clear road to recovery um for the student. And additionally, the the individual unexcused absences are still under our purview to say whether there's an excused or unexcused reason. So if we ultimately deem that an absence is unexcused for some reason, it's largely because we're we're struggling with a with a pattern of behavior that we're trying to grow.
All right, so I'm I'm trying to wrap my head around the situation that this comes up. So um we have a student, they've been out for in excess of the number of whatever the number is that we we designated being there. They have done work, but not all of her work then.
I have a young lady who's who's come to five days of schooling thus far this year. She is accessing her work from home. She is making some progress. But she is participating in a a school model that we do not offer as a traditional full-time day school. And she needs to come to school to access her adjustment counselor, um to access the social connections, um which is a a an area where she struggles in terms of her skills to be a productive member of society. Um and she's, you know, exchanging work in this very transactional manner with her teachers, but she's missing the comprehensive schooling experience. And if I am able to say, you you can no longer get the C, you can only get the pass fail. It's one of the tools I have to say, real school, seven forty to two oh nine is important. We need you here for more than just the submission of a worksheet on on Google Classroom.
All right, that's actually different than I was thinking about.
It is, because it's 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 those situations um in 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 my day, not in today's day as much, but in my day, it it could be um a real a real a a si- si- situation that's involves police, uh help. So it this is not a standard we use, but it is an opportunity. It's a, you know, to 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 use Amy's comment earlier, it's a tool.
Right, I'm 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 having a, I'm wrapping my head around a little bit there. Thank you for explaining like that. That actually makes a little more sense to me. It's more of a carrot type of situation. I kind of get that now, okay.
So we'll send you from from Monday through.
But I think there's the there's the stick, but there's also for some of our students, it's the carrot, right? Because I I'm so far behind that I can't possibly get everything done. Okay, but if you come back, you engage with us, yes, you won't get the A or the B, but you'll you'll get your credits. We'll be able to move you on. We'll be able to start again. Otherwise, I we we lose kids who are just like, I, there's no hope. We're giving them hope.
Begin and the end.
Yeah, so for a lot of kids, it's the hope of in the engage, the re-engagement that that we can offer.
Okay, I'm I'm getting it now. Thank you.
So we'll make those changes and have it for you for Monday as well.
I guess my, sorry, just to kind of, so my thing here is is if a student's going to get a pass fail for five classes, I mean, pass those classes, we hand them a diploma and see you later, hypothetically.
So we're talking about this in terms of a quarter grade? Um so that that's where it becomes something that we needed to um have their other quarters that would make up their final numerical grade. Um we don't have a situation where we would just give them a pass for the year, except in extremely rare circumstances, um very, very few. And that would be a medically excused reason why we'd give them a P for the year. Um so it's really just a more of an acute intervention, like this is the penalty, is that you can't get the grade that maybe you would get on submitting those things. Um we feel like it's a recoverable penalty and that they can get over and move on in other terms. Um we don't like the, you know, moving it beyond credit loss because credit loss might interfere with their ability to graduate if they were to lose one quarter of credit in English. Does that mean they don't get four years? Are they in a situation where they have to make it up? So it really is just a penalty. It's a pretty acute situation during a quarter where a student hasn't come to school during that time.
I, yeah, I, how many instances, sorry, how many instances are we are we dealing with in this?
Uh so I can give you some data.
Just a ballpark. I don't need, you know, like less than twelve a year or more?
So through our last year, through three quarters, we had uh, what's that? That is forty-five students who met that. But that's forty-five grades, so that might be one student who missed it in like four classes or five classes. Um and of those, then, we met went through the attendance appeals board process, which, as Amy said, is very reactive to that situation. Um and in many cases, we made a plan, like for the next quarter, you can buy back that grade. And then did not implement the policy last year, which was actually just a straight failure. This one is going to pass fail, so if you can submit that work. Um and last year, we only implemented it in sixteen cases um last year. Um so that was the the actual sort of penalty part of it was put in place there. Um and we hope this year with sort of intervention plans ahead of time, we actually have many fewer than that.
This might sound awful, but I'm going to say it because I follow who I am. I feel like we're potentially opening a can of worms for kids who don't have the social structure at home to just say, what's the point of going to school? I'll just get the pass for the thing. They'll dangle their carrot out in front of me. I'll bite the carrot, get the pass grade, and see you later.
Well, they only get the pass if they earn a passing grade, so that if they don't do the work, they still get it.
Correct, but but what I'm saying is, we're going to be rewarding, we're potentially rewarding kids who haven't done what the other kids. who haven't done what the other kids in class, who might have struggled to get that 65, been in class, worked their butts off, got the 65, got their passing grade, and yet now we're allowing other kids potentially to not come to school, but we're still going to jam them through the system to say, we got a pass in our graduation rate.
That's not what's driving our absenteeism.
Yeah, but it's also not quite the same. If they miss 15 days of school and they earn a 30, they get a failure on a 30. If they miss 15 days of school, but they earn an 85, we're going to say, well, you still didn't fulfill all those requirements, or taking your 85 and lowering it to a 65, a P for that quarter. So it's not students who don't do anything, just get the P. It is something that is basically, you get what you earn, but we're not going to allow you to earn like the full grade that you would get if you were to attend a school all the time.
Fair, but how many kids are missing that many days of school and earning an 85? That's probably very rare.
Those were the numbers that I cited, students who had that last year. So I don't know how many students that would be, but those were the cases.
And our attendance is, has been better this year, but to date, now, chronic absentees or whether they're excused or unexcused, we already have 76 students at the high school who are chronic absentees.
What is your definition of chronic?
So missing more than 25% of the school year. Less than 10 of those are currently in that attendance failure range, but we're still at the halfway point of the term. We're working attendance improvement plans with kids, we're bringing in families, we're utilizing the court system. So I still have four weeks to hopefully reduce that number of 10 with some interventions along the way. But, I mean, we probably had, I want to say, about 200 students at the high school who have been chronic absentees over the past four years or more.
And for a reference point, the Department of Education considers 10% to be chronic absenteeism. So 18 days of school too.
And that's per term?
That's per.
For this school year.
That's where the days per term is. So it's four and a half.
So we have 620 kids, we have 70, how many?
76 are currently chronically absent.
Well, you can count them all, school choice is added to that, so what that number is. So it's closer to a higher number than that?
689, so 10%.
It is.
Well, 10% of our kids are chronically absent.
Oh, yeah. The number, the number.
I mean, I would have never.
Going down rabbit hole now.
During COVID, last year, the Commonwealth's total amount of days.
Students missed 1.7 million days of school last year in Massachusetts.
That's a big number, but I have no reference to it.
It's based on 900,000 students.
Yeah.
900,000 students missed, what was the number?
1.7 million.
So two days a year.
On the, when you look at it, but you're talking about everybody having that.
Right, so 900,000 students.
So the kids who all had perfect attendance.
So if a student had COVID this year, they're chronically absent.
Because that's not a shocking number.
No, it's not, but the amount, it's on average. And the fact of the matter is, chronic absenteeism is basically around 10 to 12% of the student body.
The average student last year missed 25 days.
A more interesting number, sorry, a more interesting number would be how many students were what they would consider chronically absent, not.
Yeah, I have that, and I'll probably share that with you guys next time, but.
I will tell you this, the excuses for not coming to school range, I'm just going to call them excuses, I'm not saying.
Excuse or excuse.
Exactly, the reasoning, but the reasoning. Mr. Cersei went correctly with the name, but the school phobia, school.
Yeah, school phobia.
School anxiety.
Generalized anxiety.
Generalized anxiety about school through the roof, and as young as elementary school. So it is a problem throughout the nation, not just in Norton, not just not in Massachusetts. It's very different from when we went to school, and we have some generational gaps here. It is, you know, we have situations in school now where there is a reason to not go to school. You've actually heard some of them at your school committee meetings about if it's an election day, I don't send my kids to school, it's not an excused absence, as an example. You can always go on vacation with your children, unexcused absence. So there's a lot of family dynamics around that. By the way, I'm not suggesting that's good, bad, or indifferent, I'm just saying those are the facts, as you've heard them. It's a parental decision. The problem is that that all starts to piggyback. When you get to high school, the fundamental biggest change is transcript and a diploma, and passing at a proficiency level or more is now some of the new rules. You're at your three F-CAS test, and soon to be a fourth F-CAS test, I think. So therefore, when you look at all of this, those kids that are absent, the idea is, and I'll give you some stories of things that used to happen, real quickly, back in the day. If you have a student who is in your building somewhere in America, not here in Norton, of course, but somewhere in America, and that student is a constant problem, and you have some choices about pass/fail and making them do work, or bringing a fifth or sixth-year senior, you're going to have a lot of discussions about what to do. Right, you're going to have a lot of discussions about what to do. And then you also have, and I know people don't like it when I say this, you have a community responsibility. How many dropouts are you putting out there? And what happens to them?
So what.
1.7 million days missed because of COVID. So that's not all attendance, that's just COVID attendance.
So.
I found the slide, sorry.
So to Dan's point, we're getting out of the rabbit hole here, but to the next point, this is a conversation we should probably have at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should get some data and maybe think about talking about this, because that number seems high. And maybe it's not, maybe it's low, I don't know.
Six weeks in the school seems very high to me.
Yeah, so, you know, we should.
Let's do this a little bit better. Let's not just talk about the high school, let's do it district-wide.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, we're going to find, we're going to see problems in certain grades.
Right, and I'm sure the person that's chronically absent in the third grade isn't all of a sudden not in high school, it's probably a follow-through, so.
Other matters.
So are we still voting on this?
No, we're going to give you that. Unless you're okay with the language that was just discussed, you can vote it. Otherwise, we'll just leave it for Monday. We'll bring it to you Monday, we'll bring it to you. I'll grab it for you Monday.
I think we should see.
Yes, we will send it to you. We'll send it to you Monday, and then you can either sit on it on Monday, or you can vote on it on Monday, whatever you want to do. We're meeting at 6:00 before the town meeting, like we normally do.
Other business.
Joint conferences, school committee superintendent joint conference is in Hyannis, November 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th. If you want a voting delegate, one of you has to attend on the Wednesday, that's when you do the voting. If you are going to do that, then the report of the resolutions committee has been provided to you tonight, and you should be prepared to vote it on Monday. If you would like to take a stand on something, even though you don't have a delegate, you can have that debate, write a wonderful letter, and send it to somebody. Not sure that's going to get you anywhere, but you don't, there is no proxy vote.
It hasn't passed.
It hasn't passed, however, there's really, there, you know, as I read them, there's.
Resolution two looks pretty.
There's a couple of question marks that I would have on how you vote. There's a definitive no for one of them that I would ask you to vote on, and then everything else would be, you know.
Just like, oh, so what was your no?
So my no is yet another, another way of fudging the money. It is the establishment of a regional school assessment reserve. Okay? It's because it's another regional thing. If I can't play in that game, then you shouldn't be able to play in that game. So that was my hard no, please don't vote for it.
I do like the fire too.
I like the, yeah, financial literacy.
The financial literacy, it's got a lot of play. The preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools, I don't even know what the heck it's trying to say. The, the one that's always going to be controversial, depending on the community, is number one regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. You know, the fact is, that's very specific, in my opinion, to certain communities. That said, you know, we, how you stand on that would be yours. And then the membership of the Board of Elementary Secondary Education, they want a school committee member on there. I have mixed thoughts on that too.
I think Denez made this point last year, and I'm not going to directly vote him, but along the lines of, we never see anything with these resolutions, we never get a report that if they're passed, and we barely ever see anything go into play, so.
Yeah, resolutions don't get very far.
So with that being said, why are we a part of this? Why do we spend $7,000 a year on it?
So.
The MASC.
So MA.
Did you talk about the MASC?
So MASC's biggest thing that it has for you is all the things to do with the policies that you have in place and how they come through, comes through them. Either that, or you're going to have to do it through your own attorney, which will cost you more than $7,000 to be quite frank. That's number one. Number two, there's currently one local school committee not on MASC, and it goes back, I don't want to lie, but it's got to be a good 10, 20 years anyways. I'm going to say 20 years because I remember when I was a school committee member, and that was in the 90s. So, and then there's the superintendent searches, there's everything to do with policy, there's procedures, there's trainings, and then there's the joint effort to try to pass bills. But MASC doesn't have the clout that maybe it had prior to Ed reform. Ed reform took a lot of clout out because they gave it to, to, you know.
During COVID, they had a lot of interesting.
They had a lot to say.
Well, they had a lot to say, but they also sort of had, I think Kathleen and I had gotten to a few of their kind of online sort of presentations. And, I mean, every once in a while, there's something.
They overstep a lot, in my opinion.
Yes, they do, but.
But I mean, I think, you know, and I know, Nick, to your point, it's a big bill, but I can't even imagine what it cost me to talk to Legal for a couple of hours on some of these things. So I mean, you know, a couple of years ago, I believe Kathleen was involved. They redid our whole policy manual at, I believe, no cost, and it's part of the service.
It's a service delivered, and it's part of, a part of a three-year service agreement. It's, you know what it is, it's going to be that, in general, you can always, as a board, take a vote to not be a member. That's up to you as a committee. You can always take that, you know, if you're saying to yourself, I need to save $7,000, or we need to get more of it. You could also bring, and what happened anyways if you did the vote, and that is bring out MASC and say to them, what are we getting for $7,000? Can you give us a little bit more detail? Because, you know, times are tough. You could do that too.
That might not be the worst thing, because they maybe have services that we don't know about and that we don't take advantage of.
Yeah, and some of those services, I mean, I can go to the website, but it's not something I search for. I mean, if you're doing a superintendent search tomorrow, they would probably be one of the groups.
Well, I did see, I think, the Holbyth or Dayton, one of those just pulled out too.
Yeah, somebody took a vote and lost locally. It lost by, it was one member pushed it forward, it got a second to vote, and then that person, I think it was two people vote, I think it was 7-2, so it must have been a regional.
I think it was, I thought it was Somerset Berkeley. I don't know why that's, maybe that is something we do.
I just wrote it down, MASC and M, if the board wants to take it up again. The town meeting is Monday. I gave you some handouts, and I know you got a lot to do with the policies, but thank you for taking these on and getting it done. I also just want to go on the record to say that I have to do a better job of getting these policies to you ahead of time, instead of the way that we just did it. So I apologize to the committee for kind of setting this up in a backwards way. I was trying to get something done, and I should have probably called the meeting.
Yeah, I just have three things to that. It would be maybe a little better than 24 hours in advance, especially when we have a lot of these, because it was like.
Yeah.
Trying to play catch and read.
I think what we're going to do, I think, to your point, you're right, when it comes to policies and stuff like this, I think what I'd like to do is say, it's, let's say it's, a lot of this time, these come up during the summer. I might just say to you, guess what? Here's the copy of it, your first meeting in September, you're dealing with this, but I gave it to you at the end of July. And then it's on you to do your homework, right, instead of the turnaround, yeah?
Two, sorry, I forgot, my fault, that was one.
That's fine.
Two, sign policy, where are we at with that?
I don't think they sent this back to us as a second reading.
I was the first week, so I'll ask, we did it first, I think we did it first reading.
We did it first.
Just want to make sure we don't forget. And then the vision thing that went out to everybody, it was Vision 2026?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we, this is a little picky on my part, but I don't like when my, and I don't know how we've worn out yet, this is for me only. I never saw that until it went out to everybody, and it was kind of signed like, school committee signed off on this. Not a huge deal, but I would like a little bit of a heads up of like, hey, either this is going out and/or, to me, it felt like we're supporting this thing, and I'm not saying I'm not supporting it, but if anything goes out in the future, I would like a little bit of a heads up to say, hey, this is going out, I want to make sure you guys are aware of it prior to going out to the parents, and/or if it gets brought here first of what happened.
Nick, you're right, the fact of the matter is, the cover letter that went with it with the school committee[1773.98]